I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember David Fowler.
Here.
Doug Shasso.
Doug is absent this evening.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrop.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Present.
Okay, first item on our agenda is swearing in of Officer Brian Bagnell.
Hi, Brian Bagnell.
You solemn do affirm that I will support.
Do affirm that I will support.
Protect and defend the Constitution.
Protect and defend the Constitution.
And government of the United States of America.
And government of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and government of the state of Colorado.
And the Constitution and government of the state of Colorado.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Whether domestic or foreign.
Whether domestic or foreign.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
Allegiance and loyalty to the state.
Allegiance and loyalty to the state.
Any ordinance, resolution of law.
Any ordinance, resolution of law.
And any state notwithstanding.
Any state notwithstanding.
And that I will well and faithfully perform all duties.
That I will well all. Perform all duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
Of which I am about to enter.
Of which I'm about to enter.
To which I have been duly appointed under the pains.
Which I have been duly appointed under the pains.
And penalties of perjury.
Officer Bagnell has asked that his wife in his bag not. Position here. Step up here and do this.
Does he have a vest on? If he wanted to be really funny, he'd wait and go, "Ow!"
They practiced ahead.
He's holding still.
Very nice. Why don't you turn around for a quick picture of you and Brian together? Wonderful. So, hold your applause for me before I introduce Officer Bagnell. A little bit about him. He attended the Ames Community College Police Academy. He has a little over a year of college at Ames. He's a veteran of the USRP, military police for five years. He lives in Greeley, but I understand that they're looking for a home in our area. And he may be located as soon as possible, obviously, in his area. We're very excited to get him on board. Gives us some height. So, let me introduce you Officer Brian Bagnell, and we wish him the very best of luck with his future with the department. Congratulations. Is there anything you'd like to say? I'm excited to be here and look forward to it.
Welcome aboard and thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is an economic development update. Ms. Crossway.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening.
So, I wanted to come up here and provide you guys sort of an update of where we've been since I started back in March. So, it's been about nine months, and when I came in March, I provided you guys sort of the strategy of what we were going to do in terms of economic development. And really, our focus was on marketing downtown corridor. It was also on business retention and recruitment, and then housing. So, I just want to kind of show you guys what we've been doing so far and how we put that strategy into place. So, beginning with economic development solutions, what we really wanted to do was kind of get smarter about how we were doing our business recruitment, how we were as a department functioning in terms of keeping track of the projects that we were working on and what just made sense. So, we began with using Gazelle AI, which is a database of companies around the world that have all been indexed for growth. And some of them even have projects assigned to them that are confirmed projects where they're actually actively looking for sites, whether it's in the US or anywhere. And it really allows us, I think, to be more strategic in how we're recruiting businesses. And so, at this point, we've been able to engage with about 11 companies. And two of them have confirmed projects in the US and with both of them within our region where they're looking at sites. The second company that we started to work with was Site Location Partnership. They're a really great company that just has awesome connections with various different companies and different industries. And for us, I think, as a community, and we continue to grow, we want to make sure that our economy is diverse in the industries that we offer here and that our major employers are diversified as well. We've attended PAC Expo in September of this year, and we were able to engage with 14 companies. And out of those 14 companies, 13 of them have confirmed projects. And we actually currently have one company that is considering us for a future site. So, it's been really great to be able to engage with these companies because we're working directly with the C-level executives who do make the decisions in terms of finding a new site. We also started and just launched this month CRM through the PA Group. And what this is, is a customer relation management database, which allows us to not only track the projects that we're currently working on, but also create sort of a lead, or I'm sorry, a database of leads and contacts here within our community and then as well as outside. We've been, by us using this program, we've been able to establish that we have three current open projects. We now have a database of contacts, like I mentioned. But we're also able to track the investments that the city is making in terms of economic development so that we can pull metrics every year or even quarterly to understand what we're doing and how we're spending our tax dollars. Additionally, we can also track the incentives that the city provides now. And there's also really great service here, and we don't offer this at the moment, but in the future, if we ever did, we also have the option of using this database to track any leases. So, if at one point the city wants to acquire land or buildings and we want to lease them out, we'd be able to use the software to track those leases. And then, early on in the year, we started utilizing RealMassive, which is a commercial database, and it's on our website. And what's really great about this is that it lists all the commercial properties within Fort Morgan. And this allows us to really get smart. When we have developers looking at our website, they don't have to go and do that extra legwork of finding where the commercial sites are at. We offer that service for them. And it's really great because with RealMassive, we also have a GIS map. And I think that just really adds sort of the interaction that you get on a website and also just visibility of where our commercial buildings are located throughout our community. So, in total, by utilizing all these solutions, what we've done is we've gotten really smart about our business recruiting efforts. We're ensuring that we're diversifying our industries here in Fort Morgan, but then also ensuring that the businesses that we bring in here add a new service or amenity for the residents that live in Fort Morgan. Our next area of focus was downtown, and downtown to us is really important. It sort of creates, I think, the vein for Fort Morgan. And it can really serve, I think, as an entertainment and arts area that I think showcases all these wonderful businesses that we have there, but also encourage new businesses to come and open their doors here. So, with downtown, what we really wanted to do is revitalize it. And from the research that we did, any downtown that's successful has that sort of art and entertainment hub associated to it. And so, that's really where our thinking took place. And that's sort of where the idea of revitalizing or revamping Concerts in the Park into Thursday Night Live came about. What we wanted to do with Thursday Night Live was show the community that Fort Morgan is a place where you can come and hang out, and Main Street is that destination for them. So, we converted vehicle traffic into foot traffic. We forced people to, well, not forced them, but we encouraged people to come and walk on Main Street and just explore the different shops that we have down there and really sort of create that center of where everything's happening, and it's in downtown, it's in Main Street. And I think what we found by the city investing the time and effort into Thursday Night Live was that there was sort of a domino effect that we're now starting to see. We've had three new businesses open in downtown on Main Street. We have one on the 300 block and two on the 200 block, two of them being a service business and one retail. And those businesses didn't come here because I went and recruited them. They came out here because of the efforts that we put in sort of as a city in making downtown the focus, in creating a sense of place and encouraging people to want to come and hang out. Something that was really important for us when we were putting together Thursday Night Live was to allow vendors to come onto Main Street and set up shop. A lot of these vendors were entrepreneurs within our community or within surrounding cities. And by giving them a place to come, it encourages incrementalism, which allows them to build sort of a foundation of a business. Many entrepreneurs don't have the capital to come in and buy a building right off the bat when they start off. But by allowing them to give, or by giving them a place where they can set up shop and sell their goods and services, it gives them a platform to build off of that. And hopefully, as they continue to make money, they reinvest that into their business, and that can create leads for us in terms of filling in the vacancies that we see in our downtown. And then, just a comparison in terms of available real estate, and this is all based off of RealMassive, which is that site selection service on our website. If you look at Platte Avenue or Highway 34, we have about five available properties listed through RealMassive. We have about three on Railroad Avenue and then five on Main Street. What's been really great by having that tool on our website is that we've been able to engage with property owners who at some point did not feel comfortable listing their property publicly, to encourage them to utilize our website. It's free. We do the work for them. We upload their photos. We put in all the information in terms of the property that they're trying to sell or lease. And so, we've been able to create really great relationships with some of the property owners in downtown and being able to have them list their properties on our site for free. And then, when you look in terms of invested dollars what the city has put in so far, in terms of grant money that we've awarded, it's about 2,500 or a little over 2,500. In ads, we're close to 8,000, and these are ad-specific to downtown Fort Morgan. And then, in terms of TNL, what I spent out of economic development specifically, not including what the community services department spent, we were about 7,500 there. So, I think it clearly shows that the city has vested interest in downtown and making sure that the business community there is successful, that we're creating a sense of place for them, and that downtown is the hub where our community can come and hang out and that there is an experience associated to it. Our next focus was CenterPoint. And with CenterPoint, it was really a strategic move on the city's end to purchase this property because CenterPoint's really serving sort of as the solution to some of the community needs that we've found here in Fort Morgan. The first one being housing. As we know, housing is really important to economic developments, directly tied to it. And what we found when speaking to some of our major employers here in Fort Morgan was that there was a lack of housing, which in terms affected them being able to expand their operations, to retain employees and recruit new ones. So, the city really took an active approach in finding a developer that can come here and sort of begin to meet that need that we've all seen is very critical. So, with housing, we had several developers come to the table, and we met with each one, and we decided to go with range development from council's direction. And so, we're working with range development to close on one of the properties there in CenterPoint, about 14 acres, and to begin a multifamily development, which again is just a stepping stone towards addressing that housing need here in Fort Morgan that we need in order to also encourage development. And then, moving on, for CenterPoint, it's not only housing, but it's also commercial development that we're focused on. When we think of CenterPoint, we have this vision of a mixed-use development that allows for walkability and also accessibility to some of our major assets that we've found here or that are here in Fort Morgan. We're really lucky to have Kiowa Eye Care Center as sort of the first business going in to CenterPoint, and we're so excited to see that development happening. And if you haven't driven on Platte Avenue, please do. There's a huge sign there that says Future Site of Iowa Eye Center. And really, for us, that was a strategic sign to put up there to show residents and also those that are visiting here that the city is open for business and that we are working hand-in-hand with anyone who is interested. And what we've seen actually is a lot of interest has already been generated in CenterPoint, and we've had a lot of people contact us interested in purchasing property and begin to develop there. So, we're really excited about it, and I just, again, it shows the payoff. When the city invests its money strategically, you see the payoff sort of begin to happen as a domino effect. But going back to the long-term vision of CenterPoint, for us, CenterPoint is really important. But we also don't want to forget that we also have different assets here throughout the city. And CenterPoint really should serve as a connection point to those assets. Some of the things that we've talked about in terms of long-term planning for what that site will look like is creating bike paths and walkability to the assets such as downtown or MCC, the Walmart Shopping Center. We want to make sure that CenterPoint has a synergy with the rest of the city. And because even though it's a new development and it will stand out, we want to make sure that it connects with everything else that this community has to offer. So, now, if we sort of go a year and review of what we've done. In May, we went ahead and launched a rebranding of our marketing efforts. A lot of the marketing that was happening here was stale. It was pretty outdated. And we weren't really accomplishing what it is that we wanted to with our marketing efforts. So, we decided to rebrand everything. We took all our ads off starting in May and started from scratch. We built a marketing campaign around Business of the Month where we, every month, choose a business, and we pay for a month's worth of advertising, which I think has been a huge asset for our local business community here. Like I said, marketing is usually the last thing on a small business, and they usually don't have a budget for that. So, for the city to be able to come in and provide that extra level of marketing for them, I think, has been really essential. We've also changed up our radio ads to now be on Spanish and English channels just to make sure that we're reaching all the audiences here in Fort Morgan and ensuring that we are promoting that sense of diversity that's within our community. We use the Cover4 Theater as well to run our ads. We went ahead and revamped some of the wording on the city website under the Economic Development tab. And so, what we've seen with that is rather than it just be sort of a dumping of information under Economic Development, we looked at it through the lens, if I was a developer and I was looking at the city website and I went to the Economic Development tab, what information would I be looking for? I'd be looking for the incentives that we offer, the commercial property that's available here. I'd be looking to see who our strategic partners are, both locally and throughout the state. And I'd also be looking at different resources and demographics. And so, we've added tabs for everything there and downloadable reports, again, to show these outside developers or even people within our community that we have the resources they need to ensure that they can develop here. Our print material was also revamped. And as we continued, I think, move more into a digital age and print becomes less and less friendly, we still want to make sure that we had some print material available. And so, we've condensed it and ensured that whatever print material we hand out is directly reflective with the same sort of branding that we put on our city website. So, then, starting in June is when we began to focus our efforts on Thursday Night Live. And again, it was converting that vehicle traffic into foot traffic, creating a sense of place for our Main Street, and showing the downtown businesses that when you create this sort of event, you can benefit from it because it creates a long-term association with, okay, downtown's where I go and hang out, downtown's where I can go and shop and find these really unique shops that I probably wouldn't find anywhere else throughout the city. And so, then, and also, like I had mentioned, it encourages incrementalism of allowing vendors, outside vendors, to come in, set up shop. These are entrepreneurs within our community who don't, who are operating from their spare bedroom in their house or even their garage, and giving them a sense to come down here not only gives them visibility, but also shows them, hey, there's available real estate here that I can maybe one day move into or lease out. And so, it just, I think, all around, has a really good domino effect for the city. And September is when we began investing in our economic development solutions. So, that includes like Gazelle AI, Site Location Partnership, CRM software that we use in RealMassive. For us, it was really important to invest in these solutions because we want to be smart and we want to be strategic in how we focus our time and efforts in terms of recruitment and expansion. And it also provides us metrics and data, how I had mentioned earlier, which is really important for us to know. Are we on the right track? Do we need to change something, or is it working, not working? So, where are we today? As of today, we've attended six conferences and conventions, and a lot of these have been focused on either business recruitment. They've been focused on understanding sort of the market in terms of economic development within the state of Colorado. But what's really great is that we've been able to develop really strategic relationships with some of these state organizations that are vital in terms of economic development for Colorado. We have a great relationship now with Office of Economic Development International Trade. We've also developed good relationships with Colorado Enterprise Fund and Northeast Colorado Revolving Loan Fund and Economic Development Council of Colorado. And the two, Colorado Enterprise Fund and Northeast Colorado Revolving Loan Fund, these are really great resources for entrepreneurs and small businesses that are looking to expand. When they're unable to get funding through a traditional banking, these organizations step in and provide that funding for them. So, to have an established relationship with them has been really great. And kind of on a side note, I went to the EDCC conference about a month ago, and Betsy Markey from the, she's the executive director for OEDIT, gave the opening remarks for that conference. And she was mentioning communities throughout Colorado that have been really strategic in terms of growth, but also marketing their opportunity zones. And the first city she mentioned was us, which I think is amazing. Kudos for us that we're on the radar of OEDIT. We're on the radar, these really large-scale organizations that many of the times focus their efforts sort of on the front range in the western slope. And for us to give not only visibility to Fort Morgan, but all of northeast Colorado is amazing. And so, we're truly capitalizing on having those relationships with those organizations. We've also had visits from Senator Cory Gardner and Governor Garrett Polis, which is really great because again, it's more visibility for our community, which not only helps us out, but as a region, it's beneficial to everyone. And I did a quick count, and we've been mentioned 23 times in the Fort Morgan Times in terms of economic development, which I think is pretty great, right? We've given them 23 articles of content, all positive in terms of sort of the development that's going on here in the city and all the investments that we're making. And that's because of a collective effort that we've all done in strategizing and being smart about economic development and capitalizing on the growth that we're seeing. We've also had eight grant applications since we've introduced the facade improvement program and the downtown as-built. I'm sorry, I should say nine because I just gave one out today. So, we've had nine grant applications received. We've awarded two grants already, and we currently have one pending. And in terms of internally, you know, when you have all this growth, you have to work very collaboratively with all the departments within the city. And so, I've been very fortunate to be able to work with Ty Hamer, Steve Glamire, and Brent Nation in sort of ensuring that when we have these large-scale projects come to the table, that we're all coordinating our efforts rather than duplicating it. So, we've gotten very strategic in how we go about with coordinating our projects. Another thing that we've started is selection visits. So, when Mike Kirkendall and John Sink go out to a site, that's someone, a commercial site that someone is interested in purchasing, I try to accompany them on those visits because you get to be right in front of these potential business owners who are looking to start a business or even expand their operations. And being able to assist them in the front end by providing them resources, data, demographics, or even the grants that we have available just ensures that they're much more, that much more successful in starting a business here in Fort Morgan. So, I think in total, we've been, we've become really strategic. We've put in a lot of effort in how we go about in terms of economic development. And what we're seeing, and I think what we'll continue to see, is sort of this domino effect of development happening all throughout the city. And before I end it, I do again just want to give a quick thank you to Jeff Wells, Steve, Brent, and Ty. They've been really great to work with, and we've had so many projects come through the table, and there's no way that I'd be able to coordinate any of those if it wasn't being able to work with them and them being very able to sort of see the big picture of where we can, where the growth is here in Fort Morgan. And so, I did want to give them a quick thank you. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I thought you were coming for the Business of the Month again. Seems like you're here every meeting for the Business of the Month. Very good presentation.
Yeah, it's good information.
Very well put together, and thank you for your work.
A lot of accomplishment in the short tenure that you've been with the city. You've done a remarkable job in that short period of time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And if you could wave a magic wand and bring an entertainment or arts business to downtown Main Street, what would you bring?
Oh, I don't know. Let's see.
Jerry.
A lot, yeah. You know, an arcade would be great.
Cool.
Thank you.
Sarah's been a great addition to our team, and as you can see, she works well with all of the other directors. And sometimes you might come to the building and she's not there, but she is always busy. She's out meeting people, going to conferences, and making sure that things are getting taken care of. So, we really appreciate her and all the hard work that she's put in.
With that, the next item on our agenda is a presentation on a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a development agreement for Bath annexations. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is kind of some cleanup from a while ago, actually. I don't know exactly when we started this process, but you know, we've got a special guest here tonight. We've got Mr. Keith Bath here to answer any questions and talk to council if there are any. But you know, we sat down with Keith some time ago, and he built a brand-new corn flaker machine, which adds a lot of value to the agricultural production within the community. I don't know everything about corn flaking, but what I do know is that most of the corn that's grown in our county goes to Keith's flaker, and then it is improved or enhanced in value and sold throughout Laramo County, Weld County, and Morgan County for the dairies and the feedlots. So, he is the market for a lot of our local farmers and provides a lot of value to our community because we know that agriculture is a big part of what makes the city of Fort Morgan great. This agreement and the resolution that you have in front of you is basically to finalize and solidify the handshake agreement that we made with Keith when he agreed to bring his property into the city of Fort Morgan and annex into the city of Fort Morgan. Again, that was a strategic annexation that will help us in a lot of future land development and land growth, provide us an opportunity also to access some right-of-way that's been dedicated to the city for connectivity between property down by the highway and the current industrial park. And I think that Keith will be a big part of a lot of our future development, moving into the future just because he owns a lot of farms around here and does a lot of farming. But what this agreement does is it puts Keith where he, for long-term, if a new council comes, new people show up, this basically puts into play what we agreed to when he decided to annex in. He understands that, you know, he'll continue to be able to do what he's done on that property as long as he continues to do that property. And a couple of other things that came up in the process that we incorporated into the agreement. And Jeff can speak a little bit more to this in a minute, and I'm speaking of that, Jeff, not myself. That, you know, we wanted to make sure that his business isn't affected by coming into the city. That was a big part of what we agreed to. And so, one of the things we make, we're going to make sure is that his corn that he flakes is not going to be subject to, and we don't believe that it will, but we just want to make sure it's not subject to sales tax, or somehow can be subject to sales tax. It's an agricultural commodity, sold wholesale, but we want to make sure that we're going to manage that. And then also, you know, some of the issues with sales tax onto his property. One of the issues that has come up, for example, is he had some electric work done out at his factory. And, again, this is being business-friendly, the electrician said, well, I've got to charge you sales tax because you're in the city on these things. And, you know, the response is, well, what if I have you deliver them to my principal place of business, which is in the county, and I just drive them in and hand them to you? He said, well, then I don't have to charge you sales tax. And so, we went through that conversation, said, well, you know, it doesn't make a lot of sense to require a business to take delivery of something that's going to be put on their, you know, building in the city to avoid the sales tax, why don't we just make it easy for them? So that's another thing that we're going to address moving forward. And Jeff has gone through a lot of analysis to make sure that we do this correctly, and I'll kind of turn it over to you to highlight some of the things that will happen when council adopts the resolution and the agreement.
Well, specifically on the tax question, the annexation agreement in and of itself can't create the tax relief that Jeff was just talking about. Because Fort Morgan has its tax collected by the Department of Revenue, unlike a home role city that had its own local collection. If that were the case, we could do an exemption on the front end and see to it that the tax is never collected, but we don't control that part of our tax system. So the Revenue Department would collect the tax, and the way we will accomplish this is by creating a tax refund mechanism, which we can do. And I'll be drafting up an ordinance to accomplish that amendment to our code. And it's referenced in the annexation agreement that we intend to do that, that's our goal. We can't, we can't contract zoning in these agreements, and we can't contract tax exemptions either.
And so as part of that, again, to be business-friendly and make sure that we're keeping Keith whole in the process and keeping to the agreement that we have, that ordinance will provide that there will be a refund, in the event that taxes are collected from the state, there will be a refund of any of the city taxes, and then a nominal fee associated with any costs that, associated with him getting that refund, so that he doesn't lose any of the value of what he pays into the city. So we'll get that put together probably in December and bring that back to council. But we're just really grateful for Keith and his business and what he does for the county, his willingness to annex into the city. I think a lot of times people get a little bit nervous about what that means and what it's going to do for them. And Keith has, in good faith, worked with the city to bring his business and his property into the city. Keith, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add, or if anybody has any questions of Keith. Yeah, come up to the podium.
Does anybody have any que, I'm Keith Bath, I'm a dirt farmer out here between Morgan and brush.
Is there much value or a market for raising dirt?
Yeah, yeah, I know what the dirt raises. But if there's any questions about what I'm doing out there, and the volume we're doing, and we're on city gas, city electricity, and I guess, is there any questions?
Just since you brought it up, what do you do as far as volume with your flaking and everything? How much corn do you?
That, it just seems like, and you, everybody's a business person in here, if you have a quality product and you got service with it, it just seems like it explodes, and that's what happened out there. I started out in 2000 flaking corn out there, and I just, with my eighth-grade education, took this little Big Chief tablet and a coffee can, and I took it around to dairies, and they looked at it, and we started out probably, you know, Empire Dairy. I mean, Norm and Jack jumped on it right away because they seen the quality, but now, we've built that up to where I had to put another machine in. And that machine's expandable, so I can double its size for another 750 grams, so. But I think in time, we'll probably, right now, we're flaking about 400 semi-loads a month. That means 400 have to come in unloaded from the farmers, and then we flake it and we send it out. We're flaking for 40, just under 50 dairies in Colorado and about 10 dairies in Utah. And we even, don't you laugh. We got, the Colorado State President has a dairy, and they seen our flakes, and so now we're sending them to the state penitentiary. And I went there in August just to see what was going on, and it was amazing. But I've had a great experience. I was born in the same house I still live in, and I, my, Kevin's brother's named Keith, my mother named me after Kevin's brother. That's a fact.
I didn't realize that.
And, but, anyway, I've had a, never been associated with the city financially or business-wise, and it has been a great experience. When Brent and Jeff first mentioned it to me about annexing, and I got scared because I'm county and they talked to me, and I could tell by their, the way they were, their lingo and the way they were talking to me that they wanted to be a partner, they didn't want me to be some kind of customer. And it was awesome, and we become like this right away. Like, I trust him. I trust that man with everything I got. Brent Nation and Sharon, same way. And if you don't have trust, I won't do business with anybody I don't trust, neither will you guys. And I want you guys to trust me, too, that alls I want to do is maintain my, growing corn and buying corn from my neighbors and adding value to it. You know, as corn comes from Nebraska, it runs a straight line west, and the only thing that makes it stop somewhere is money. If there's not money being offered here, it keeps on going. And the only way I can stop corn is by paying more money for it. And I guarantee you, we're, my own farms and my neighbors' farms, we're adding value to their market. And it's not because of some, it just happened naturally, because we use it and we can sell it. But your staff, being in the trenches with your gas people and your electric people and your whole crew out there in the city, they're amazing. Absolutely amazing. You guys got the most awesome crew. Those guys treat me, when I have a problem, I call them and boom, it's like 911, and they're out there. And they know what they're doing, and they treat me good. You know how nice it is to be treated well? Isn't that cool? And treated with respect? And they're, the whole experience I've had has been great. Sharon, make sure that I remember my meetings when I have one with, some with Jeff, and I've only had two or three. She knows I get up early. And she sent me a text at four o'clock in the morning saying, Keith, okay, you got a meeting with Jeff today. She's amazing. And it isn't just me that these guys treat that way. They treat everybody that way. But, anyway, that's, I, I'm excited, and I love Fort Morgan. I love the people in Fort Morgan, and I like working with you guys, and I don't mind at all sending that 50,000 a month into the city for my
You do.
natural gas and electricity, because I know what I'm being allowed to do with it, and I know the services behind it. And it's so important to me. So, that's all I got.
Well, it's nice to do business with somebody that will do it on a handshake as opposed to written in agreement. And I hope that we have earned that trust. We talked with you in our executive session, and it was a pleasure to meet somebody that still goes on their word, and so.
I appreciate that. That was really cool, what you said. Appreciate you guys.
It is an honor, and you don't see a lot of that nowadays, and I respect it.
Hey, Ron, could you repose that? I think you'd like to get a picture.
He wants a picture shaking hands.
I bet you can get him to do it.
See him break.
I appreciate this guy, too. We go way back.
Shh.
All right, this is my old.
You're done.
Out of the hot seat.
Thank you, Keith.
Thanks, Keith. So, yes, Jeff?
Well, I just wanted to mention, before we convened, the mayor, the resolution before you authorizes the mayor to sign this agreement. And Jeff was mentioning this agreement is being brought up to date. I just, the mayor pointed out on the signature page, we have the former attorney's name, and then it's, we got a 2018 date we need to fix. So, the resolution will be with the understanding that the executed copy will have those little details taken care of. I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a development agreement for the Bath annexations, with the understanding that there'll be revised execution dates.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, and a second by Clint, Kevin, Lyndle. Woke by roll call.
Okay, that resolution carries on a unanimous vote of six to nothing with Councilmember Shasso absent.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, Keith. Thanks for coming tonight.
Next is a presentation on bids for a core aerator for the golf course. Mr. Gibbons.
Hard act to follow, huh?
Yeah, he's pretty tough to follow.
You gotta get up early in the morning to follow him.
That's the truth. Good thing I do. I don't know about that early. I'm not on my phone. I'd prefer she didn't. This is a bid for a core aerator for the golf course. It's a 2009 Conservation Trust item, $25,000 was approved in the budget. This aerator will replace a unit that was purchased in 1998, so a 21-year-old unit that has gotten to the point where this spring we had a bearing go out, one of the shafts bent, and now it's kind of doing damage to the putting greens on one shaft. There's seven units on this aerator that go up and down. One of them is going pulling the actual turf up. An advertisement for bids was placed on the city's website on November 1st and made available at City Hall. Held the bid opening on November 12th. We only received one bid on time. That was from Potestio Brothers for $26,182. We're requesting council approve and accept the amount of $26,182. It is $1,182 over the budgeted amount. However, we have purchased two other items from Conservation Trust this year that were both well under budget, hoping that those under-budget items will make up for the overage on this particular item. Any questions?
One thing, and it's kind of going off on an aside, I'd kind of mentioned, Ty, I don't know if he mentioned to you, but have you ever heard of Planet Air?
I have, yeah.
What about that as opposed to one that takes plugs, that understand it kind of uses blades, so?
Planet Air is actually an item that I tried to look into for this particular bid. Their Colorado distributor has since gone defunct and is no longer, they are actually the company that we bought our Jacobson Fairway unit through. They are no longer a company. I actually called Planet Air, they're made in Great Britain, got a list of their local distributors. There's a company in Omaha that sells them. However, they're, they wouldn't contact me back, and we were getting to the point where I needed to bid this out. So Planet Air is something that I would like to use in the future as a maintenance item versus a, this is more of a twice-a-year core aerate type item. Planet Air is a, is a, an aeration slash verticat unit that you can actually use every three to four weeks on your greens, and it's a really cool item, actually.
Yeah, I just heard good things about it, and so I was wondering if you were aware of it. I realize this also serves the purpose of helping get some sand down into the soil and stuff like that, too, so. But you're already one step ahead of me, so.
It's all right.
Any other questions? There are none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the bid from Potestio.
Potestio, yeah.
Potestio Brothers in an amount of $26,182, with the understanding that the amount that is over the $25,000 will come from savings and other areas of the Conservation Trust.
Second. Our resolution by Lisa Northrup, and a second by Kevin Lyndle, woke by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt. Next is a presentation on the city sponsorship of an artificial ice rink for Christmas Capital of the Plains. Mr. Hamer.
Evening, council. Mr. Mayor. I really, tonight, just wanted to give you an update on Christmas Capital of the Plains and kind of explain how our relationship with the event has changed a little bit. We're all aware of the parade and the different Saturday activities that happen. Last year, Media Logic actually asked us to participate a little bit more in Santa's House. We did that, went great. This year, we were approached to be kind of the sponsor of the main attraction this year, which is an artificial ice rink. One of the benefits to us, being the contract holder of the ice rink, is it'll be covered under our SIRSIA insurance as an event, one of our regular events that would be covered in our policy. So the way it's going to work, hopefully, is what we've worked out. Media Logic and Christmas Capital of the Plains still going to raise money and gather sponsors to put on their event. We're going to funnel some of that sponsorship money through the city to pay for the ice rink. That way, it'll be sponsored by us, insured by us. We'll also have a staff member there at the ice rink during opening hours. We won't actually be renting the skates, but we'll be assisting the company that comes. The ice rink will be here for four days. It's pretty cool, it's a synthetic surface, it takes lubrication, it takes ice skates that are constantly sharpened. So part of the deal is, instead of just a product showing up and, you know, Lindsay's guys and the Parks guys building it and putting it up, they'll actually be two of the employees from Artificial Ice Incorporated here to help man that ice rink for the four days. Our recade or volunteer will help assist them with crowd control and that kind of thing, same type of thing that we do at Santa's House. We're pretty excited. The parade is Thursday, the 5th. Tell me if I get any of this wrong. The first Saturday will be December 7th. That's when the kids movie will start, Santa's House will start. I think we're going to do a cookie decorating event. And then the 14th is our big, I'm calling it Christmas carnival, but we used to have ice sculpting contests one Saturday, chili cook-off, the rotary chili cook-off another Saturday, we'd have golf in the park another Saturday. Now we're having one great big Saturday festival. We've got the ice sculpting going on, chili cook-off going on, Santa's House and the ice rink, all happening on December 14th. And then things wrap up on December 21st with some other activities. Kids movie every Saturday, Santa's House pretty much every Saturday. So, we're excited. I think I added in the folder for all you guys, the parade application. I did get an actual schedule from Lindsay yesterday, if you'd like to see kind of the official, non-official schedule. She said there still may be changes, right? So, we think it's official, so be looking for the Facebook page to see how that goes. But yeah, if you have any questions, Lindsay's here to answer, and I'm here to try to answer, but that's kind of how the relationship's going to work this year. We'll still close Beaver. Beaver will be closed with the bathroom, and the ice skating rink will be on Beaver, kind of where Snowzilla and the Snow Maze usually is. I don't know if we might move it closer to Main Street. I kind of think that would be cool, but we'll see how it goes when it gets here. Any questions? So we're just kind of looking for a resolution of support.
So, the ice rink has been an idea of Lindsay's for like, four or five years now?
Six years, I think.
Six years, and trying to figure out how to make it work. And when I heard we were going to make it work this year, I was really excited, not just for her, because she's been working on it for six years, but I think it's going to be a really cool thing for the community and a big part of the Christmas Capital of the Plains this year. You know, and we're at, on our eighth year now for Christmas Capital of the Plains, if you can believe that, and we're still, it's still a lot of fun, family-centered downtown activities, and Media Logic does an awful lot to make sure that that is done right. So, want to thank all of you at Media Logic for what you do to help the Christmas Capital of the Plains.
Well, thanks. And to that, I will say, yes, it's been a long time coming. The company that's bringing that out, Ty mentioned, Artificial Ice Events, we went looking for an ice skating for an ice skating rink about six years ago. They're extremely expensive. That's what led us to Snowzilla, and then last year's Snow Maze. It's all the same company, so we're dealing with the same crew. So we kept asking them every year when they sent somebody out, what should we do? How would this work? So they've looked at that area, they've given us ideas. To give you an idea, this rink is about, I think it's about 60 by 80 or 60 by 100 feet. It's gonna have about, capacity is 45 to 50 people at once. So we're not talking about a small rink with just eight to 10 people at a time. So we've been working with the city with tourism panel to really make that the feature for Christmas. Because we get it such a condensed time, that's due to budgeting, it's extremely expensive. But we think what that hopefully will do is drag people down multiple times to try this out and make it kind of a big thing that nobody else around this area has, and it can be used in any type of weather. So we're really, really excited about it getting here by December 12th and being here. The hope is then, once it catches on this year, we're able to extend and bring it over more days. And we'll also just add that we've, it is the eighth year we're entering into, and we've never had this much downtown business engagement. There are some meetings and things going on with downtown businesses, and their engagement has been great. They've taken some of the load off of us, are picking up some different activities. And so when you see the schedule, there's some things they have added, which we just haven't seen before. So it's extremely exciting to see that all come together again. And so, we're excited to kick it off December 5th.
Entertainment hub.
Yeah.
And you're gonna be there to flip the switch, right?
You betcha.
Yes, yes.
Do I have to step on the ice? I'll drive the Zamboni.
Ice skating will be there yet, but we can still put skates on.
Yeah, give it a try. What's the worst could happen? Use my health insurance.
And thanks very much to the city group for being willing to look into it with us. One of our biggest hang-ups was insurance got extremely expensive, and Media Logic was footing the bill for that. So for Snowzilla and stuff, talking thousands and thousands of dollars. So that's helping us out to be able to get something like a rink that is way more expensive than the other attractions we've brought, so. Any other questions?
I think it's gonna be cool. We're not gonna have to have the huge chain link fence this year, right? The rink, I think, comes with kind of its own white picket fence around it, so it's a little bit more self-contained. I think it'll be really attractive and create kind of that winter carnival feel.
Christmas Capitol has really gone a long ways over the years, kind of like Bob Stock, it just keeps evolving.
We keep pushing.
Yes, you do, and it's much appreciated.
How many people can skate on it at once?
Right about 40, between 40 and 50, they tell me. And that was one of the things when we asked, we wanted the company to bring people out with it, because it is a little bigger undertaking. So they will help manage when people have been on, to pull them off if we have long lines and things like that. But you're looking at close to 50 people at once comfortably. They say 40 to 50.
Will they provide pillows for those that'll fall down?
Knee pads or something?
I'm pretty sure I'll land on my butt. It's fine.
We could just all get lessons from Brent.
Yeah.
Hey, Mayor, just a warning, if you break your butt, the cast is really...
You can't check anybody against the glass, Brent.
I don't think he can go fast enough to check anybody.
I don't know.
I imagine it is.
I watched his YouTube video. All right. I think, do we need a resolution, John, to support?
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd like to make Lindsay's Christmas dreams come true and offer a resolution for our city sponsorship of an artificial ice rink for Christmas Capitol of the Plains.
Second. That was a good resolution.
I have a resolution.
I hope it makes it in the paper.
By Allison Howe, a second by Lisa Northrup, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Christmas dreams do come true.
Thanks. Thanks, Mike.
Next is a presentation on a proposal to purchase audiovisual equipment for the new senior center and to accept the donation of labor for installation. Mr. Hamer.
Okay, so, most of you are familiar by now with Kenan Entertainment, Michael Blacka's company, who has helped us with numerous projects, two different installations on the band shell, also a little bit of work at the swimming pool. He's upgraded kind of all of our audio systems in those areas with high-tech speakers, connectivity. Michael came to me one day, well, he actually came to several of us, to Steve Glamire, to George, to Gene Doty. He wanted to contribute somehow to the Gene Doty Senior Center. So I got with Michael, got him a plan of the building, asked him to write up a proposal. He brought me back a proposal that I don't even know if I want to begin to try to explain, because I don't understand any of it. But basically, it would turn the building into a smart building. There would be TVs located in all the various rooms, if we want. He's got almost two TVs in each room, exercise room, billiards room, card room, the main common area. I don't know, that might be overkill. But the idea is all the TVs would be connected, controlled by a processor, there'd be speakers throughout the building. They could, all the speakers could play the same soundtrack, same input, maybe it's even the streaming input from downtown main speakers, a system Nelson built. At the same time, each room could operate independently, so the guys could be in their room watching a game while they're shooting pool, the girls are in the card room watching the Home Shopping Network while they're playing cards, and Jeff is giving us a presentation in the common area, for whatever reason. I don't know, it can all be separated. The cool part, it's all computer-controlled. It could be controlled by a tablet, it could be controlled by iPhone, could be controlled by dials on the wall. Basically, Michael's proposal's pretty much all-inclusive, includes speakers, wires, Cat 5 cable, insulation of it all. The one thing that it doesn't include would be TVs and if we purchase a tablet as a remote control, say, or two tablets, or we recycle some from IT. Those we would buy separately. He can't save us money on TV, so he didn't put it in the bid. His total proposal's around $40,000. Installation, labor is about $10,000. He would like to offer that as a discount and donate the labor to install this system, which would put us at around a $30,000 hit to the Gene Doty Senior Center budget. I met with Jeff, he thinks there's room, he thinks we should go ahead and look at it. I put in there a little bit of a contingency to give us some room, just in case. I think, I think this new building is gonna be so fabulous, right? I mean, it is gonna be kind of the first step to some really new, beautiful buildings in Center Pointe. Well, it's not in Center Pointe, but it's close. I think it might be worth going the whole way and making it top-notch. This would do that. You know, we can always put TVs in and have cable TV, or we can go this way, so.
And part of the reason why we feel this is important, not just, I think it's going to add a lot of, it's gonna make it a lot easier for the people who are running the senior center to make sure that they have the right environment for everybody wherever they're at. But I think the big thing is that this has really become a community project in the sense that we have a community member that's donated a majority of the money. We've had several other contractors come in and donate their time and materi, not materials necessarily, but time and equipment to put in water lines, sewer lines. We've had them, we've got companies that have committed to donate the labor to put in the parking lot. We've had some companies come in and haul fill dirt for free to help out with the construction. And we, you know, when somebody comes and says, hey, I want to help you put something in there, you know, we didn't charge ransom boon for the pipes that he put in and other things. And we think it's a, it will be an integral part of the facility itself. So, there's room in the budget, and we think it's a good idea, but because it's $30,000 in something that we didn't necessarily anticipate, we wanted to make sure that council was on board with that, and also an opportunity to thank Mr. Blacka for his willingness to donate a considerable amount of money.
Well, and I probably should have mentioned my, their family, friends. Michael grew up with the Doty family, he knows Gene. I mean, that's where it all came about. He wanted to be a part of the project somehow, so.
It's just so, it's, heartwarming is kind of a silly term, but it's heartwarming to see how many people have stepped up. You know, once Gene stepped up and decided he wanted to do this for the community, there's just been so many people. Everybody wants in on this, because it's gonna be revolutionary, bringing, you know, our community into an area with the senior center that is just absolutely top-notch. And, you know, taking us, you know, that next step of being, you know, a community that's just, you know, on the forefront. I mean, this is just one more economic development thing that shows that we're, you know, our community's investing in itself. And I think it's just, this, you know, and to have somebody, you know, like Mr. Blacka being willing to step up and providing these last little bits for the senior center, I think we would be short-sighted to not...
And I don't, Michael was gonna try to come, but he was like, literally flying in from Canada or something today, so I don't think he's made it, but he wanted to be here.
This is a, this is a great opportunity to do, to do the, you know, the right thing.
Well, the other thing about it is, I, from the very get-go, I thought that it would reflect well on the community to have such a top-quality community center for our seniors. And so, I think especially in view of Mr. Doty's generous donation enabling us to do this and give the seniors something that's top-notch, we should continue and seize this opportunity to, you know, try and make it as nice as we can.
We could have Jerry's music going through the whole senior center.
Yep.
Okay, any other comments or questions? There are none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the proposal from Kenan Entertainment in an amount not to exceed $32,169.68 and accept the donated labor costs.
Second. I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Clint Anderson, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Brent.
Or Ty?
Brent was on his way up.
He didn't know what you said, now we're just confused.
Presentation, next on the agenda is a presentation approving the third interim agreement between Southern Water Supply Water Project and the city of Fort Morgan for increasing the capacity of the Southern Water Supply Project Eastern Phase.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hopefully, this is the last interim agreement with this project. This will pay for the construction of the actual pump station and everything that we've been talking about here for the last year or two on this. They've started, they've got the bidding done on the project, and they're now looking basically for the final allotment of money from all the participants to do the construction. They've already started doing some of the work. I was in here getting some money in this year's budget, the current calendar year, and they've started working some of the project, but this is for the lion's share of the construction, the pumps. The pumps are big. I mean, this is not a small pump station. This is five vertical turbines that are 700 horsepower each. For anybody that's ever been around pumps, that's, those are, yeah, those are big. So, this is the last piece of that, and last financial piece of it. The one thing I did want to point out on the money side of it, when we put together the budget request for 2020, I was given the numbers, but I didn't realize that they were gonna add in a change order account. And so, we actually only budgeted 3.5 million, and it's a shade over that. Our portion this year's 3.6 and change, when you read through the agreement. So, it may not be, you know, we still may be under the 3.5 when they get construction done, but we won't know until late next year what that'll be. But Northern Water needs the agreement signed by the mayor, and so that's why that's in front of you. And then they are requesting that we make payment into their construction account here in January, so. They're already giving us the bill, and it's not even 2020 yet, so.
It's always 20 up front.
It's for their Christmas wish.
Yeah, it's their Christmas wish, so. But this is that last kind of piece on the pipeline that gets us to a point to where the pipeline will not be an issue for us bringing water. This solves that capacity issue. We have pushed that capacity before, and it's time to bring that capacity up to something that we can use in the future and not have to worry about it being a problem. So, and this is all money that we've been setting aside and knew would come out of the budget, and we're not looking at financing it or anything like that. Be happy to answer any questions.
I ran across some paperwork when I would negotiated the lease of Fort Lupton's additional capacity.
Mm-hmm.
And it was 2000, late 2001, and the estimated cost for this pump station back then was $360,000.
Wow.
So, over that period of time...
We should have felt it then.
Yes, yeah, it was, but we, it was...
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We should archive that.
Yeah, I liked...
Probably shouldn't have brought it up.
I liked what you said in the mayor's meeting. Basically, it just moved the decimal point over.
Yeah.
Or the comma over one.
Yep. I'll be coming in next meeting with, you know, NIS financial, you know, requests, so we'll have a whole nother conversation about costs and dates on projects, so. But yeah, this will take care of the pump station, though.
And then we'll have a complete pipeline, what is it, 17 and...
Yeah, it boosts us up, yep, 17-point, yeah, I think, something.
Three or something like that.
Yeah, and then with quality water, the way we exchange our capacities, it gets us almost double of what we're using right now, so.
Anybody have any questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, we'll grant another Christmas wish, as Ally said before, and I make a resolution to approve the third interim agreement between the Southern Water Supply Project Water Activity Enterprise and the city of Fort Morgan for increasing the capacity of the Southern Water Supply Project Eastern Phase.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
Next is a presentation on a police plan to offer lateral entry officer hiring bonuses to Chief Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Lou, Hank.
The police department would like to, in the interest of transparency, present a program that we'd like to try, an experiment, on offering bonuses to hire lateral entry police officers. Kind of an overview of this is, in the last few years, and I have a lot of documentation to support this with me, last few years, police applications are down about 66% nationwide for a variety of reasons. And in Fort Morgan, we hire police officers in two categories, non-certified, meaning they have not been to the police academy, and certified, they have been to the police academy, also known as a lateral entry. And we're doing okay. We're not doing well, we're doing okay hiring non-certified. Takes a lot of work. We go to all the police academies in the area, we advertise, and we're doing all right getting non-certified people to apply, and we hire them. When we hire non-certified, it takes a year before they are on solo patrol. We have to hire them, they go through a lot of testing, we send them to the police academy, which is six months long, they enter into a 14-week field training program. If there's a bump in the road, they go back into training. It's a long, arduous process that we have to follow. We can't shorten this, really, for somebody who's not certified. On the other hand, when somebody is certified and they have experience as a police officer somewhere else, and we hire them, obviously, they don't have to go to the police academy. They may have a shortened FTO period, and they wind up on solo patrol much quicker. It saves us about $30,000 to hire somebody who is already certified. The academy costs about $3,400. We have to pay their salary for six months, benefits for six months, we provide a car for commuting purposes. There's a lot of costs hiring somebody not certified that we don't have to expend if we hire somebody who's certified. The issue is, how do we get certified people here? Right now, that well has dried up completely, not just for us, but everybody in the area. Very difficult in this part. in this part of the state to hire lateral people. So, what we're presenting tonight is a program to hire two lateral entry police officers, which will put them on the street a lot quicker on patrol. And to induce this, a bonus plan of $5,000 for each one and a $1,000 referral if a city employee refers a lateral officer and we wind up hiring that person. So, this whole program is not to exceed $12,000. If it's successful, we would probably come back in 2020 and see if we could make it more of a permanent effort. The cost of this, I should say, the funds to fund this will come out of our already existing budget, out of salary savings. So, the net cost to the city is really a savings of about $30,000 per hire. We wanted, again, in the interest of transparency, to present this, get your approval for this, and proceed as quick as we can. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
So, you have two officers you're currently looking at utilizing this with?
No, sir. We, we don't have anybody that we're looking at. We would advertise this.
You're only going to do it on two officers for right now, is that?
Yes.
Is that this experiment intent of hiring two lateral entry officers?
That's correct.
So, I was just asking if you already have two officers that you're looking to utilize this on, or is this just?
We haven't identified the officers. We would advertise the new bonus program and try to get them on board.
Any other questions? Okay, there's really no action. Everybody's good with it, been informed, so.
We just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of it and inform the community and make sure that we had your approval. So, we'll proceed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Keep track and let us know how it works.
We will, absolutely.
Next is presentation of a proposal to delegate authority to the city treasurer to refinance city debt under certain conditions. Ms. Kenny, Mr. Wells?
I'll let Jeannie kind of explain what we're discussing here tonight, but it, it basically is to provide us with a little more leeway to refinance in favorable circumstances. So, I'll let Jeannie kind of go through what we're thinking.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to present, you had a memo in your packet, and it's essentially that we have a relationship banker with Wells Fargo who contacted me after he saw in our audit what we were paying for our, our loan. The only loan that the city really has is, is a loan from 2015, when we combined several water loans into one and got a really favorable rate and a favorable result. But right now, you know, interest rates are going down even more, and he was indicating that maybe we would want to refinance. So, we worked up a proposal for us, and we would, the one that he worked up, we would save about, oh, $335,000, I think, is that what I said? I should say the same thing, $311,000 we would save if we refied the, the loan. The problem is, is that, you know, like, the next day, it was a different amount, you know, and then the next day, it is a different amount again. And so, it's, it's up and down all the time. When he first presented it to me, he thought we were going to be able to save about $500,000, which I was really super interested in. But it turned out that we have a make-whole provision in our loan from 2015, and that make-whole provision allows the, the lender to charge something for, for the, the refi. So, we had the understanding there was no penalty from our, our investment bankers and people. We had the understanding there wasn't any penalty, but it turns out there is. It's a, on this particular example he gave me, it, the rate would have been 1.76 for us on a 3.13 loan, but it's like 2.576 because they add .85 to it. So, because of the make-whole provision, this isn't nearly as attractive as what we had hoped, but you still have to think, you know, $311,000, if you could save that over 10 years, would you? You know, I mean, the city really isn't all that different. We're bigger, but it's not any trouble. It's, the mayor and I signing it is really what would happen for it, for it to work. The problem is, and the reason that I'm before you, is because I need to have the, the authority to make this decision, lock the rate, get the paperwork signed so that, so I wouldn't have to come back to the council. And so, he recommended we do a resolution, he even gave me an example of one. But for me to do that, I need to have some parameters or guidelines from you, like, do, would you want to do it for $300,000, or would you want it to be only done if we were going to save $500,000? Would you, would you want to change the, the term of the, the loan? I wouldn't recommend that, because right now, we only have to pay for 10 more years. And it can look really good, but if you're paying out further, I don't think we want to do that. I think we want to keep with that period of time. So, you know, we just have to make it clear what would be those parameters and commit that into a resolution, so that then I could go forward on into, you know, like, if we did it by the next meeting, then I could go on looking at if rates continue to go down and it becomes very, very attractive, I can make the decision without having to call, you know, on the council to, to do that. So, that's, that's the, the idea. Is there anything else, Jeff?
I would just add that what we do is we bring back a specific resolution with the parameters set by council on when we're allowed to do this. And so, that would give us the opportunity to monitor various debt that's out there. And right now, we only have one outstanding debt, but that's going to change in, in the future as we move towards NISP and other opportunities. And so, this gives us that opportunity anytime if, if your position is $500,000, if we can save $500,000 over the life of the loan, then, then we have the, the ability to pull the trigger or not. And then ultimately, you would have to go and the mayor would have to sign it. Staff wouldn't be doing this on their own. Mayor has to sign all contracts, and so, there would still be a certain level of council oversight from the perspective that we wouldn't be able to sign anything without the mayor due to the charter requirement. So, we just want to be able to be nimble, I guess, in the market when we have an opportunity. And I think it was very good for Jeannie to identify that as an opportunity. And we guess we'd ask you first, do you want to do it? Second, if so, what, what, how much savings do we need to, do you want to see before we, we pull the trigger? And if you're not sure, we'll put together some sort of resolution and bring it back to you, and you can, we can tinker with it then. But we just wanted to discuss it and see if it works for you guys.
I like $500,000. I don't balk at $311,000. But as far as how this would work, Jeannie would find the availability, it's a matter of timing between council meetings.
That's the problem, yeah.
Basis for this, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, it would come to where you would have a agreement to refinance to save $500,000, but it has to be done by two days or so before it changes. Then that would be authorizing the treasurer to implement that, sign it, and it would give information to each council member that this is being done.
Yeah, and we.
We can conclude that.
Come back to council right.
Right.
Right then.
And, and in essence, it wouldn't have to necessarily come back to council at all if that's what, but if that's what you want us to do, we'd be more than happy to say we'll take the action similar to an emergency purchase and come back and at least give council the heads-up, hey, we did this, and this is what happened. But Jeannie would be authorized to, to lock in the rate essentially, and then the mayor would be authorized to sign all of the final documents to, to close the loan. And this way, if, you know, Jeannie said, hey, we're getting up to that $500,000 mark or whatever it is, and we want to pull the trigger, she can, she can say, okay, do it today, because interest rates might go back up, and then we start the process and get it done, and we don't have to say, oh, wait, we want that, but in two weeks, we'll, we have another council meeting.
I mean, it sounds like sound, I mean, I don't see the downside. I mean, it's a sound business plan to make sure that we're, I like the word that you used, we're nimble.
Yes.
You know, when we have that opportunity and two weeks, we'll make, I mean, the deal could be on in that period of time. So, I guess I, 500 sounds like a good number. I don't know, I don't know, I don't, I personally don't know how to pick that number, so I guess.
Yeah, I, I wish we all do. I did know.
I was thinking if you made it 250 and we saved that, that would buy a new trash truck.
Well, that's the thing with these, yeah, 311.
Substantial savings, so.
Yeah, I, like I said, I just look at that as if it was 250, that's a new trash truck.
I mean, any, I mean, obviously, the paperwork, the cost, there's got to be a line, but yeah, I mean, to me, 500,000, that, that seems like a lot.
But this is the water fund, you can't spend that money on a trash truck.
I'd like the number to be lower.
Yeah, what's that? This is the water fund, you can't spend that money on a trash truck.
I think Brent has the money already spent.
That would go for NISP or something.
We could get that pump paid for.
Yeah.
Part of it.
We could realign that money, that savings store.
Yeah. I like the idea of a lower amount, because the, the guy that talks to me will encourage me to do, you know, he's not trying to rip us off, he's trying to help us. He's our, our Wells Fargo guy, and I think that he will, you know, say, hey, it looks like things are continuing to go down. It's silly to do anything now, you know? Or he'll say, boy, you better get in, because you're not going to even get to do it if you don't, you know? So, I think a lower amount might be better, but I don't, I'm not opposed to whatever amount you guys want to do, you know?
I feel like our consensus is an amount that justifies the staff time, the pain to, you know, do the paperwork and all of that, and that we'll have, that we can buy a trash truck.
No, we can buy a vehicle to use in the water department.
Water.
So.
We'll.
So, we got.
Draft something.
Do you want us to draft something then?
Maybe we could even have a couple of options on there. Of course, when you approve something, you can change the number when you do it.
Later.
Okay, we'll bring something next time.
Start at 500 to go down.
Yeah, we'll, we'll kind of look at like what.
I don't want to set 500. I agree with Kevin. I mean, 250, that's a pretty substantial amount to save over the course of a loan, so.
So, do we really want them then to have to draft all this, or can we just?
Yes.
Yeah.
It should be in writing for me to be.
No, I know, but do, do, what, do we want them to do the research on the numbers, or just, just that?
Yeah, we'll do the research, and I think what Ally says makes sense. Let's, well, there's a cost-benefit analysis, so we have to say, you know, is it worth our time and, and the cost of the refinance to do it, and what's that number? And we can come up with a number. And based upon the feedback, I'm, I'm seeing that people want it on, when I say lower end, I mean, we, we want to save money wherever possible. And so, 500,000 obviously is, is too high, and so we'll go down towards the lower end and look at what, what that breaking point is and bring back a recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jeannie.
Tell him, tell him thank you.
Okay, next is a presentation and possible direction on a proposed ordinance to allow a large group home in a B2 zoning district by special use permit. Mr. Glenn Meyer and Mr. Wells?
All right, y'all, good evening, by the way. Y'all have an ordinance in your packet for consideration. We're not looking to do any adoption on that tonight. We're just looking for a little direction. We've had some inquiries into our office about large group homes potentially in the B2 zone. Currently, those are allowed in the R3 and the B1 by special use only. We have a group that's looking at some sites that are in the B2 that fit their need. A large group home by definition is, is a building that's used for residential occupancy by eight or more unrelated individuals that might be receiving some type of care or treatment or training. And then there might be individuals that are providing those training that either live there or don't. These can be transient overnight stays or permanent overnight stays. It just depends on the type of, of group training or, or care that's being provided. So, we looked at that. You know, the B1 is really our general business zone. It's primarily confined to the major highway corridors in town. The R3, we do have some of that throughout town, but it's primarily all built out into residential homes for the most part. There is some, and so what we did was we provided a map in your packet and tried to highlight the area of B2 that's in the city, try to mute the rest of the colors and bring that B2 to the forefront so you could see where those are. There's a large, significant portion of B2 that's, you know, adjacent to Railroad Avenue and, and a section that's on the south side of the, of the tracks there. A lot of it's owned by the city, CenterPoints, all B2, of course. And then, of course, out by the Walmart area is, is a large portion. So, there's a lot of land available, particularly along that Railroad Avenue section and on, off of Burlington and Commerce Avenue there that could lend itself for, you know, an area that, that might work well for a large group home. So, that's the ask tonight, is to consider that. We would do this as special use, if we added that as a use, or as a designation on the use table. So, it would come back to you for approval if, if somebody did have an application and wanted to look at that. But I think this opens some area of the city up for potential development for, for a large group home that we don't really have available to us today. It's just hard to find an area in the R3 and the B1 that, that could meet that need. So, I don't know, Jeff, if you had anything else you wanted to mention?
Yeah, and I think one of the things we want to do, and, and I know that Jeff Wilson can speak to this as well, we don't want to zone out a, a use, a specific type of use. And there has been situations in other communities where certain uses were completely impossible in the zoning code and have been found to violate federal law as it relates to fair housing and other types of issues. So, in some ways, this is not to address a problem, but is prescriptive in the sense that we're trying to be proactive and look at issues that, that could happen in the future, but also provide more opportunities for, for different uses in, in various areas of the city. And I think Steve has done a really good job to, you know, look at what are our uses. And we're actually going through the code right now and updating it with, with the legal department on things like this as, and other things that come up in the code that we seem to need to update. So, it's, it's basically updating what we need. And Jeff, I don't know if I'm out in left field on the whole fair housing thing, if I am, you know?
You're not, and I don't think at this stage we need to get any further into the weeds on that. But you're right, there, it does infracte federal mandates in terms of, of these group homes and discrimination against them and so forth.
It's definitely a, an opportunity, I don't want to say an opportunity zone, but it's an opportunity for a business of sort in our community that would be beneficial to, you know, the residents in our existing community. And, you know, there's definitely, you know, depending upon what type of a group home it is, I mean, this could be used down to even the level of a group home for children that are in out-of-home care. And those are, you know, spoken from working for social services, there's a lot of kids that get placed in communities outside of our county, which creates a different set of problems. And something like this could open up a avenue for, you know, there to be children that are still placed out of home, but potentially still within the county. So, I think there's, it's definitely a, an area that, you know, it's good to set up a, a zoning district so that we have opportunity for businesses like that to come in.
And Steve, this would all be all by special use permit, right? It'd have to be requested each and every time.
Yeah, you would see each and every one of these applications, if they came through our office for review to make sure that the parking was appropriate and that the area was, you know, it wasn't affecting life safe and.
Sure.
Life safety and welfare of the community in the area and that type of thing, so, yep.
Thanks.
So, if you all feel pretty good about that, I think the next step would be that we would bring the ordinance back to you all for first reading at, at the next available meeting, and then we could just move it through the process. But we just want to make sure we weren't, you know, out of bounds with this one before we process that through, so.
And it, and it, and it's part of the process that, you know, in, in speaking with council and things that are going to make it easier for us to develop policy with ordinances, before we even bring a, an ordinance for first reading, there are very few emergency situations with ordinances, and we want to make sure that we're. with ordinances, and we wanna make sure that we're taking the time to give the council time to think about it, read it, look at it, as well as for the community to hear about it, maybe provide feedback to the council on it, before we even bring it to a first reading. So if there are modifications before we get, or issues or problems, we can address that as we develop the policy and before we get it to a, a public hearing.
Sounds good. You have direction.
All right, very good. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Next is a presentation and discussion on a proposed ordinance creating a stormwater utility for the city of Fort Morgan and implementing a stormwater fee. Mr. Wells, Mr. Nation, and Mr. Glennmeyer.
I'll, I'll go ahead and take this one, guys. Notice they didn't jump up. You know, this is something that we've been working on, and again, this is, we're bringing it back for discussion. This is in no way first reading of the ordinance, but it's something that we've been working on for many, many years. I mean, the original stormwater study was done, I think, in two thousand and two, and when it came back, it said there needed to be several, or tens of millions of dollars in stormwater improvements throughout the city. We did an update on that in two thousand nine, two thousand eight, two thousand nine. You'll recall, we had some pretty extensive regional flooding from, you know, some good storms that came through and dropped a lot of rain in a short amount of time, and we still continue to have some flooding in some areas of the city when we have, you know, big thunderstorms that come through. And so, in an effort to address these issues, since two thousand and nine, we have been updating and improving the stormwater system throughout the city. The first notable improvement was when we did the Main Street updates downtown. We added stormwater downtown, our drainage downtown, and since then, we haven't had flooding in the downtown area. We have other areas that need enhanced. If you go down to the Optimus Park, we've got, we, we put a, I guess, some storm drainage and retention in that area, using the park as part of that process, and, and we, on Ensign and Eighth, we put in a very large vault that would be part of a continuation to help drain the northwest side of the, the community. So we continue to do these upgrades in different places. Out at Center Point, we made sure that that was part of the development out there, that there's stormwater included in that area, and, and we're addressing that. But we also know that while we can look at future development and require storm drainage improvements by developers, we have a lot of things that still need to be fixed within the city. And this has been a concern by citizens and something that we wanted to bring back just for discussion with council. We have put together pretty much everything ready to go once council's ready to, to move forward, but we know that these things can be touchy, and, and we wanna make sure that we're, I guess, working with council to make sure we're doing the right thing. If you look at the ordinance that's proposed there, I think we've included, essentially what it would do is it would create a, a separate section in the wastewater or the sewer department, and it would be part of the sewer bill. We, we included in there all of the designations, and I think we've presented this once in the past, of how we classify different properties and how they'll be charged, and I'm not sure if we put in, I don't think we, there you are, the proposed rates. If you look at the Exhibit A of the resolution that would adopt the rates, undeveloped land, that would include, you know, different, like the parks are undeveloped, empty lots, undeveloped, they would be charged at that rate of two dollars and fifty cents. Residential, five dollars, high-density, six dollars, business and commercial, eight dollars, and industrial, seventy-six dollars. And that is, I believe, based on each parcel, not a linear foot or anything like that. So that's what we've come up with, and it doesn't raise the complete amount of money that we need, but it starts us down that road to start building a, a fund and continuing with what we're already doing. Part of the money to support this fund would come out of the general fund as a transfer. We'll continue to use existing employees in the Streets Department to, we, we won't create a whole separate department and new people and new trucks. We'll use our current employees to continue to do what we do and build up a capital fund. One thing that's really important to note, that we, we received almost, I think it was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it was close to a million dollar grant, for a million dollar project on South Sherman. That was a really bad area. Since we've put that in, the flooding has been less severe. We know there's additional improvements that need to be done in those areas, but we received that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Department of Local Affairs in a grant, and one of the things that we were asked when we went in there for that is, do you have a stormwater fee? And we said, no, we don't. And they said, well, this will be the last grant you get from us until your community starts demonstrating that they're willing to put forward to address this problem. We're not going to continue to provide, you know, grants for your community. And that, that was a large reason why we started doing this. We knew we wanted to obtain grants where possible to fix these problems, and they're expensive. The other thing that we wanna be ready for is Phase Five. We hope it happens at some point, I-76 Phase Five, where they'll redo the overpasses at Exit Eighty and Eighty-One, kinda like they did through Brush a few years ago, and part of that, we've worked with C.DOT and already updated and upgraded the stormwater line from the river just to the other side of the overpass, on the north side of the overpass. We wanna be able to tie in and repair and replace a lot of that stormwater infrastructure in that area when they come through, and we'll be able to get some of their funding to assist us, but we've gotta have some money to throw into the pot when, when that comes as well. So this is to be prepared and be proactive in addressing the stormwater replacement issues that we have and upgrades that we have needs for in the community. And so, if you have any questions, Brent and Steve are in the back ready to answer those. I'm just kidding.
I see them hiding back there.
I'm just kidding. I'm, we can answer those questions.
The stormwater stuff is actually, it dates back quite a while. We ended up having to do catch basin cleaning. The Street Department picked that up with the street sweepers and that back in two thousand five, two thou- in that area. Ensign Street was also rebuilt because of the stormwater lines that were in there and the problems that we had. That road had been built up and had such a crown, there was no maintain, or there was no ability for the water to stay in Ensign. It ran off, and Morgan Fed used to flood when we'd get a heavy rain. So a lot of those things, we don't get heavy rains all the time, but when we do, people start remembering this really, really quick. We've made a lot, a lot of progress, but we're still a long ways away from meeting the stormwater, water quality criteria, and it's gonna be getting more intense than what it is currently. It, it's not the city trying to be a big, bad city. This is things that are coming down from the federal, upper government side of things. It's gonna hit us with our backflow prevention as well. So this is actually what we've done for years. It's just to a point, as Jeff stated, we were told by DOLA when we did the Burlington and Sherman, this will be the last grant we would be able to get if we don't have a stormwater enterprise fund in place. So Brush has one. They've had one for quite some time, and I, I think, you know, I've had a couple of calls on this, and, and I've explained it just as I am right now. It's, it's a evil necessity, but it is a necessity that we, we need, and the rates, I know every little bit here and there hurts or impacts people on, on fixed incomes and that, but it's, it's something that we do have to do, so. I appreciate the fact we bring this forward, and, and I wanted it to be something that we bring up and get discussion on, but it is a necessity, and it's not something new. It's just back in the limelight. So we'll hear from you big time. If we get a hellacious rain, I, I will guarantee it. So, one question I, I did receive on this was, where, what was some of the rationale? How were the, the fees in the impervious area that is put on this established?
So, and I can answer that really quick, and, and so when we looked at this, there's different ways that you can say, you know, you can go and do linear foot in front of a house and say, well, that's how much linear feet they have, and if you have a corner lot, then you just get to pay more. I think that's similar to what they do in Brush. It's linear foot along the front of the, the businesses, and it's so much per foot that you have to pay. You can do it by impervious, where you go in and say, hey, each lot has X amount of pervious versus impervious, and then we charge based on a calculation of, of per square foot impervious, I guess, improvements on the property, and then you have to pay based upon that because that's how much water you're putting out into the street and into the system. When we looked at what it would take just to put together the GIS and going to every single property and mapping this, then updating the map every time somebody builds a shed, puts in an, an extra driveway, or changes what they do in their yard, just the amount of money that it would take to prepare that and administer that with new people, everything else costs more than what the fees are that we're prom- proposing right now. And it didn't make sense to us to go to, you know, to be so overboard that we're spending all of our money and trying to just administer a specific plan. So what, the way that it works is it's based upon zoning, and if you see that, you've got, we use undeveloped land, and then you've got residential, high-density residential, business, commercial, and industrial, and we are looking at, we looked at all the different parcels and where this would attach, and we came up with, you know, generally based upon our, or you saw the zoning map earlier of how that would impact each one of those areas. There's, so if you are in a specific zoning area, that's how we determined that you would receive this specific charge, so.
Okay. But residential is just based on a flat rate and not on your impervious area to your lot?
Correct.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments on this? Okay.
So what we can do is we can bring this forward for a first reading, or we can wait, or we can wait for you guys to get some feedback and at the next meeting make a decision and, or just have a discussion on whether we wanna put it on the agenda, but I think at this point, I'm sure there'll be some, some, I know that there's a news story on this, and, and I'm sure there's been, like you said, Mayor, you got some feedback.
I had two phone calls asking about it.
What it is.
So I gave them the same scenario I ju- I just did here, so.
And I guess we would encourage, you know, people in the public that have questions to get in touch with their council members and, you know, find out, you know, what information do we could need to provide to the public from staff's perspective and to the council to help you with this decision.
So let's just go with, see what transpires between now and the next meeting, and we'll set a first reading based on that.
Okay.
Works?
Sounds good. Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Steve, Brent, and all your guys. It's been a long time. Lot of work put into it. Oh, next is the consent agenda. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight's consent agenda includes Item A, approval of the disbursements and payroll for October, and Item B, approval of the minutes of the November 5th, twenty nineteen City Council regular meeting. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
Okay. I would entertain a resolution accepting the consent agenda as presented.
Your Honor, offer a resolution to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a resolution by Allison Howe, second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay. Public comment or audience participation for items not on the agenda. Welcome, Mr. Wattem.
Good evening, Mayor-elect Shaver, members of the City Council, staff, press, audience members, and those who were elected in this past election. I welcome you to, I'm, I'm glad to be here. It's been a while, but I have been a very busy person. I have not been ill or anything like that. I've just been on the go ever. The last time I was coming here, I had a board meeting. That was in October. I wanted to come here in November. Well, that was election, and I was kinda busy. So I am here tonight on several things, but I wanna take this opportunity to wish all those people who ran for Awards One, Two, and Three, and for Mayor, I wanna wish you congratulations on your election and hope that the next two and four years are gonna be very productive for the good of the citizens of Fort Morgan and Morgan County. And I really mean that from the bottom of my heart. Yes, I've had disagreements. I sometimes don't understand a lot, so I ask questions. And when you ask questions, you get answers, and sometimes the answers make more sense than the questions. But that's me, and I also take notes. That's why politicians don't like me. But I am here tonight as a member of the Senior Center Advisory Board. And the first, I'm gonna give you just a brief update of what we are planning, because I think you need to know what we are doing, because we're not just sitting around there doing nothing, are we, Councilman Howe?
Not at all.
Oh, it's, the first item on the agenda, the board got to take a private tour, thanks to Bob Elrich, of the new Fort Morgan Gene Doty Senior Center. Now, as one who's been volunteering at the Senior Center meal site for twenty-one years, this is gonna be a godsend. This is beautiful. It's huge. I was very impressed because I, we're gonna have a patio where we can eat out in the summertime. In the card room, it's huge. The billiard room, there will be at least four pool tables, and believe me, we need those pool tables, because we have a lot of men coming in and playing pool currently. As for the meal site, the kitchen is wonderful. It's gonna be a lot easier to serve than it is... It's going to be a lot easier to serve than it is currently. The dining room is huge, I mean huge. I was very surprised, and I was so glad to see how big that was. The restrooms are going to be enormous, bigger than the ones currently at the current Senior Center. This is going to be a marvelous addition to the city of Fort Morgan. Now, I just have a request, and it's unselfish part of me, now we need someone to step up and donate a baby grand piano, but that's me. I am very, we are very excited, those of us who volunteer, who took the tour of the board, were very excited about this, and we can't hardly wait until it's done. In fact, Councilman Howe will tell you, when we walked into the old Senior Center, we felt like we were walking into, it was so small compared to what we're going to be going into. I am very excited to hear tonight, we're going to have all kinds of surround sound as well as TV monitoring, that's going to be wonderful, if you can get the Yankee game on there, I'll be happy. But anyway, the board was very thrilled with the new center, and we are hoping that when we have the grand opening, which will be sometime next year, we don't know when, that the people will not only come down and utilize it, but not only utilize it, but take part in whatever we're going to plan. Mr. Steve Sampson gave the board a challenge over the holidays. At our next meeting and several meetings, we need to come up with ideas for activities, not necessarily just for parties, but maybe some type, different types of classes, so that the Senior Center will be utilized as much as it can. Now, I also want to tell the council, being on the Colorado Commission on Aging, we traveled all over the state, and our lunch was always at the Senior Centers. One Senior Center I was in had a baby grand piano, but they also, every once in a while, had concerts in that Senior Center. And I never thought of it until I saw the new Gene Doty Senior Center, and I thought, you know, if we could come up with a policy to do a concert every now and then there, wouldn't that be wonderful? But again, you got to remember, folks, half of Fort Morgan is senior citizens now. And so, this is really, we are very, very excited about this. And I want to thank Gene Doty, and I want to thank all the people who are donating their services for this magnificent building, because I have been wanting one for a long, long time. So, now on with what we are planning, and this is only going to take very briefly. Right now, we are in discussion, in just discussion, there's been nothing settled. On two trips, long trips, one to New England and one to Albuquerque, but nothing has been set, nothing has been done or said, we just, we have to figure out which way we're going to go. Also, we had an update, Councilman Howe gave a wonderful report from the city, I won't go into, but I do take notes, as Ally will tell you. As for the trips, we had a Rockies game in September, four people went. They had a great time, and the Rockies won. Now, we, I'm going to give a report on the Branson trip. There were 44 people that went on the Branson trip. I went on that trip. That was a wonderful trip. It was fun, we got to know every single person on that bus, because we had a breakdown in Kansas City, Missouri for three hours, and we got to know each other in a conference room. And we had pizza and pop and you name it, we had it. But we did go, we got into Branson, and the food was wonderful, if not enormous. No matter where you went, even the breakfasts were huge. We saw seven shows. In fact, the first morning we were there, we had a show at 10 o'clock, one at 4:00, and one at 8:00. And we were on the go, we did have some time to go shopping, and I found my love, Kris Kringle Christmas Shop, which had thousands and thousands of Christmas ornaments, and I came, I bought 16 of them, which would just add to my 300. But be that as it may, it was a wonderful trip, we had a lot of fun, a lot of laughter, and Steve Sampson was a jewel, let me tell you. You do not know what a wonderful man that is, and here's why. On the way back, we were on our way home, and we stopped outside of Kansas City, Missouri to tour the World War I Memorial and Museum. If you haven't been there, you need to go, because that is a beautiful memorial, and the museum is enormous, but you need a whole day to go through it to take in the history of World War I. When it started, why it started, how it started, how the United States got into it, and they have films all over the place. But something happened before we left the museum. I was sitting on a bench, just relaxing, and two gen- a gentleman went, big tall man who works at the museum, went over to another gentleman and said, "We're going to have to write a commendation letter about the Steve Sampson from Fort Morgan." And the gentleman said, "Why?" He said, "This man, this is his first trip, and in his first trip, he knew what to do, how to do it, he said, 'He was so good with those seniors,' he said, 'He was excellent.' And he said, 'We have more seniors come through, and they are so unorganized,' but not Sampson.' So, he was going to make a recommendation to Diamond Tours, I don't know if he made one here to the city, on how wonderful Steve Sampson was in that World War I museum." And to me, that was worth all hearing that with poor city employee, it was wonderful, from somebody coming from Missouri, that you have a wonderful man in, in Steve Sampson, and everybody at the Senior Center who went on that trip likes the man. Now, going on, we had 33 people go on the casino trip, but a lot of them canceled, including yours truly, because of the weather. We weren't sure of the weather, but they went anyway. We were going to go holiday shopping on Thursday, but that got canceled because of five people showed up, were willing to go. Now, we come to December, now this gets interesting. We have a Holiday Inn, which is a kind of a dinner theater, a candlelight dinner theater, that is sold out. I mean, the, the tickets for Fort Morgan going, they're gone. On the 16th, which is a Monday, we have some tickets left to go hear the United States Air Force Academy Band. Now, here's what the plan is for that. We're going to, you eat at home first, and then we leave at 12:00 from the Senior Center. We will hear a two-hour, maybe more, from the Air Force Academy Band, and then we'll go out and have dinner, and then hopefully, we will go and see the lights in Greeley. I, I went to college in Greeley, I don't know of any lights in Greeley, except I called some friends, they told me where to go, see lights, but that's on the 16th. But now, we go into 2020. Here's what we're going to start doing. And Ally, you weren't there, so, well, you may know this, but we're going to start something new. It's called Senior Night Out. And what that basically is, it's going to be seniors going out for dinner at some restaurant, and we're going to do this for 12 months, but here is how it's going to work. On January, we'll go to Fort Morgan, February with Brush, March in Sterling, April in Greeley, and then revert back, and we go clear through the end of December. And we will try to find different restaurants, and who knows, we might find different places as well. The other things that are coming up, that we've already made plans for, in January, we're going to try to go to the Denver Mint. That will be in an afternoon, but again, we don't have any dates, times, or whatever, because it's all being negotiated. February, maybe on the 20th, they hope, is the Butterfly Pavilion. March, July, and October will be the casino trips. April will be the Rockies trip. And in May, we're going to go see a dinner theater called Curtains. Now, I don't know how this slipped by me, but I've never heard of it. It's a musical, never heard of it, but it's a mystery, and I'm going to get tickets, because I've never heard of the thing. Right, right now, in, we're going to have a high tea also in February, and also Pie Day in January, but again, dates have yet to be set. Well, that's about all I have right now from the Senior Center. Are there any questions before I move on to my last thing? Okay, now, my last thing is this. I'm going to take the opportunity to wish every council member and city staff member and the press a very happy Thanksgiving. You know, we have so much to be thankful for, and you don't really know how thankful you are until you've been through what I've been through. When you've been through three heart surgeries and were presumed dead, and here I am, five years later, talking to you, I thank my, my God, every, every Thanksgiving that I'm still alive and kicking and able to go and be involved in music, politics, my church, sports, and aging conferences. And believe me, I go to a lot of them. But I just, I want to remind you all to have a happy Thanksgiving and go around the table before you say grace and say what you're thankful for. Thank you, Mayor-elect Shaver and City Council for your time.
Thank you, Jerry. Have a good holiday yourself. Anybody else? Reports by officials and staff?
Anybody have anything? One thing I'd point out, at our last meeting, we announced that we received a DOLA grant for $70,000 to promote the census, and Daniella's been working really hard with Brush and, and the committee that's put, been put together to do that. This count is going to be really important for our county for a lot of different reasons, and we are working really hard to get out into the community and spend this money in a way that will get that awareness out to our citizens. I think, you know, one of the, the things that people get concerned about is what is the information used for, should they fill it out or not fill it out? Maybe there's some people that maybe question, you know, if it's good for them to fill it out or not, and really, we just need everybody to fill it out. There's some really innovative and good ideas on how we can promote and educate our citizens on what this is about, and I want to thank Daniella and, and all the other members of the committee throughout our community for pushing this forward. I think it's going to have a huge impact on economic development. I know they're working to finish the south end of Saunders. I know we cut the ribbon and opened up the dog leg, which, it's getting more and more traffic, but they're also trying to get that south part now that it's heated up a little bit and see if we can't get that done here before the snow flies again. But things are going really well, and really appreciate all the support from council. Were there any issues or questions that council had from staff that we can address?
Ty, do you have an update about the grant application for the 12 Mar Farms Trails?
Kind of. I looked back. I looked back the other day with John, because we were talking about it. We won't know if we made the first cut until the end of December, I think. Basically, it said CBW staff and initial reviewers are currently, you know, going through the first phase of the process. I'm not panicking yet. I was a little bit, but then I reread it, so I think towards the end of December, then we start to, you know, worry why they haven't contacted us. Hopefully, it's a good thing they'll be scheduling presentations for the month of January, so.
Awesome, thanks.
Yep.
Yep, that's it, thank you very much.
Bids, meetings, and announcements, Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. There are a few bids out. We're accepting sealed bids for 75 and 112.5 KVA pad-mounted transformers until 3:00 PM on November 21st, sealed bids for a four-wheel-drive, half-ton pickup until 3:00 PM on December 5th, and sealed bids for three police patrol vehicles until 3:00 PM on December 5th. This meeting pretty much wraps up November. The, all city offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday, November 28th and 29th for the Thanksgiving holiday and the council mayor's day off. Then the next City Council regular meeting will be on December 3rd here at 6:00.
Nothing coming else before the council? This meeting's adjourned.